I got six o'clock. Six o'clock and so I like to call the order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tampa Board Directors. It is Tuesday, December sixth. My name is King Craig on the board chair because we have one quarter remote thing rushing around the room. Who's here first? In person?
Place is Indian night. Over the hill at work.
They pull by chair.
Since then, Warren.
And we have one more member on Zoom.
Melissa Conley, board member.
Right now, we have our administrator, two administrators and superintendent here. So if you just say hello.
Mark Tucker, superintendent.
Sarah Welsh, elementary principal.
And Larry, Larry Pliggin's here, but he's on the room right now. Give me back in a minute. Okay, so. So that's the thanks for coming. And we go, are there any? Moving on, are there any additions and or changes to the agenda you need to add? I thought I might have a deletion, but we're gonna leave it on and talk about it in student route search. Okay, we're gonna move on to the minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
We need to put, discuss a date for the. The building.
We will do. So we're gonna call that under your next meeting dates down here. We're gonna say that when we discuss next meeting dates. I don't think that needs to be a specific. All right, that's that's had been my plan. If that's what everybody, I'll move on. I'll get three sets of minutes to talk about. The first one, we'll go one at a time. So I got a correction on the third, but I just saw. That happened an hour ago, November first. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes of November the first? That was our regularly scheduled meeting. Do you have any questions about that? It's an action item. I'm looking to see if anyone wants to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them. Minutes of November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion, the second, any questions, comments? Any questions or comments about those minutes before we call the action? Hearing none, all in favor of approving minutes from November first, please say aye. Thank you, Mr. Derry. November the fifteenth was a special meeting of the Daniel School Board. That's the one that you met in the cafeteria. Molly wrote up those minutes pretty quick. They're pretty good. Anybody questions about those minutes?
I'll make a motion for those minutes.
That's the second year. They're pretty good. And then, yeah, do you have any questions about those minutes? We call the action. Hearing none, I call a question. All in favor of approving the minutes from November the fifteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. November the twenty-ninth minutes on age. On during any attendance, it says elementary principal Sarah, and it doesn't say Welch. I just saw it this afternoon and I looked over for the second time. That's my only correction. Does anybody else have anything on the November the twenty-ninth minutes that they that they saw when they were reading through? Just any attendance, it just it just doesn't have a last name for her. I assume it's this this elementary principal Sarah, but. Anybody else? Anything? All right, with our action.
Make a motion for those.
One second.
Second from Melissa Conley. The discussion. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. What that moves us on is to administrative reports. So I'm gonna start with the superintendent.
Okay, just couple things I want to update on. So when I wrote this report, I. Did not have test results in Danville. In fact, I did not know that they had done the. More sampling. There are little glitches between this book and notify. When they're coming to do that, and that hasn't been happening. Think I sprayed that out, but they actually did the testing back in October and. I found out from the engineer that he had submitted his report to D E C on October eleventh. And. We still inhabit. Late in, late in November, so I asked D E C what was going on. The next day, we got the report. I did write to the board and the community about the results. Very low levels detected in three areas in the building. The expectation. Is there to do appropriate mitigation, which we did within the next day. One of the spaces is electrical room that nobody goes into. The other one, we see. Kitchen storage area where there's nothing really exposed in there. And then the stage, around the stage area auditorium. We put in or upgraded the air filtration. Units for those two spaces. So at this point, what we're waiting on is I asked engineer to. Put together a work plan because they have to come back in and. Do source testing to see where the PC themes are reaching from into the air and. So that's a, that's a weeks long part process for them to submit a work plan and then D E C has to approve it and then. They'll schedule that testing. So we're, so this is probably not gonna happen. Before, before the Christmas party. I don't see this. It may not even happen in January. And then based on the source testing, we'll get recommendations on what. The ideas about the comment, where it's coming from, and then we'll know specifically what we have to do. We'll have to permeate those materials at their source. Seems likely in the electrical room that it's somewhere in some of that old electrical equipment. And I don't know, I don't know. I have a clear idea about the kitchen, kitchen storage area. And the gym, I'm suspecting it's, you know, there's a whole bunch of old. But I'm sorry, the auditorium is a whole bunch, you know. Stage equipment, electrical equipment, stuff like that is probably coming from. One of those sources up there, but at this point, we've done what we need to do. To deal, to deal with the problem and we'll, you know, be updated as we go along. The other thing is this Vermont C T E study. There is a long term study underway. The legislators are asked A O E to look at. C T E programming and C T E funding across the state. They set up, they contracted with a consultant. I was, I was asked to speak with the consultant because I'd shared some. Earlier, shared some concerns with Secretary of Education about. What Danville, Danville C T E students are designated to go to the academy program or L I. And the way the funding is set up. The state's not providing any funding for our students, those C T programs at both these schools, so the. Net result of that is it's more expensive for us to send. The annual high school students to the St. J Academy or L I. For half day program, point four, point five program, and it is new to Senate cabinet, food field, school area for holding. So I raised that. Issue with the Secretary of Education didn't seem to know that that had happened and it's. It's unusual because Danville's the only public high school in the state and it's not attached to a public. C T E facility, so. I was interviewed by the consultants on Monday and made that story out for them. They are, they're tasked with providing a report to the legislature, not just about that, but just. Our C T funding in general. One of the things. That they are batting around is possibly. Just having the state directly fund all C T E education period. And right now, the way that it works is. Not for Danville, but for the others, for Captain Twinfield. So you understand, state pays a part of that. Cost upfront in a pass through and then the the school pay the difference. And that's in my budget. So in Danville's case, we have to budget more money to pay for C T E education. L I, so I think it's, you know, the legislative report is due in mid-February. If they hit that date. We'll see what it says about larger, the provision of C T E programs in general and we'll see if there's. There any recommendations on addressing funding that. And level of playing for, I think, the Daniel High. I would like to see how. You know, it's not as simple as just saying, oh, we, you know, send them to Barry because it's a longer, it's a longer drive. So, you know, that would be, that would be concerned and there's certainly nothing that's gonna happen. Without the board being involved and saying you support. There is a path to petition the state board to change the designation. But that's something that will go through board process and. And you folks will get to decide if that's something that is invested in Danville. It's not a decision. I can't really win, think on my own. For months of, you know, I don't think this is, it's certainly not gonna happen this year. I don't even know what will happen. You can stay, stay tuned to that.
So they have any questions for Mark?
How much on average is that amount to go to the. A J or L I program?
Depending on if they are billing us for point four or point five, it's, you know. Eighty-four hundred to ten-five. The projected tuition for. Captain and Twinfield students next year in Barry is eight, eight seven hundred dollars, so. And again, the differential being that Barry's a full day. A full, ounce of the full day program because it do two thousand hours in school. Saint J Academy and L I treated as their, their blocks. They do two blocks a day. And of course, they have their own enrolled students that take advantage of C T E. Classes at their particular schools and if they, they have an enrolled. Academy or L I student. That's interesting with C T program, they get scheduled in two blocks. And that's about roughly what we sent our kids for. We bust them down and we bring them back.
But how many students on average is that?
Around fifteen this year. Fifteen or sixteen that we have are fluctuating depending on the first. What we're trying to do obviously with the, you know, with the, with our own. Experience or learning programs to build up interest in C T E education. Because there is. I think there's an unmet need in, in all the schools who generate, in terms of generating awareness amongst students that that is a. That is a path, you know, with. What I'm concerned about, of some, there's a subset of kids that think you need to go to college or you go work. There's a lot in between, so they ask for them to retain the job is through. Technical education, if they have an interest in, you know, hands-on, you know, technical work, it's. Pays pretty good, you know, right? My son's a master electricity. He provided me out. So what he makes is a master electrician, so. It's lucrative and that's where the jobs are, you know. You work at Vermont into. I don't know, I could tell you this unemployment rate was like two point five percent statewide. But there's, there's thousands of, of technical jobs that are unfilled. And the law, they can't find people that they want. That's why the governor's fought on this, why the governor pushed. The legislature to trigger out, to get away to deliver technical education demand, that's what makes that so important. But everything takes a couple years to go through the. Plan. Their deprosency, we'll see.
All right, can I ask about the van driver? Or should I ask about that?
I don't, last I heard, we did not have that. We're trying to, we released a van, I mean, you have to put van. Transport students and we had trouble staffing it.
Is it just an hour or twice a day? Is that part of the problem?
Well, we had to, we wanted to start, we wanted to staff that with our own employees, but we can't make them work. You know, come in at summer clock in the morning, you can't make them do that. And we didn't have enough interest. In people doing that, so.
Well, yeah. It's off staff now, but not until seven thirty.
Right, not until seven thirty, so but. I don't wanna get into specifics, but there was, there's a request to have that.
That, that's what that was. Do they need any special endorsement? No?
Yeah.
Nope. No, it's not, it's not considered a bus? Do they need to have a valid driver's license and do they need to go through the. Put any employee through, through as far as your driver's. If you know somebody who's interested.
Okay, any more questions? We're gonna move on. We also received. Student services reports. Do you guys have any sense of making that? Having questions for that and to throw them on the table. If you'd like to, we're gonna ask Mark directly. Hearing none, we want a principal report. Sarah, there. But tell us anything.
Sure. So one of the things that we. Done for the past, I think, four years now. You know, Thomas, have a picture of that. Number, we do a December countdown, so there's different. Dress up and then there's going. There's different food that we do for the teacher and things like that. We're not gonna. Unenjoyable. Time and then. Winter wellness, we're trying to take that back up. We've got. Maxfield is who took on a lot of that planning and so with him not being here this year with better crew. Which is usually Babe and Emma Taylor and the Robbins. Yep, no, I'm open to the else. You can, you can jump in, but yeah, they're working to still coordinate the dates and locations.
Talking this year. The, we're in the second year of post-COVID, Bretton Woods dropping the ski bird completely, so we're on the bird's radar for the next year. Basically, it was our done August again this year. So we'll move, we will do downhill skiing next year and move back to Burke. We are working with Crasbury and Benchester to get the states. It's gonna be smaller this year, but that's. So I think I, Melissa was gonna ask a question about this. Question. So it basically sounds like you're saying that the downhill skiing has more to do with the lack of availability than, than funding?
It's correct. So in the past, Bretton Woods. Extended us a rate that was essentially six trips for about sixty dollars a person. That program went away. The new rate that they've offered us is. They'll give us twenty dollar lift tickets if we do full price tracks, which is, it's about a eighty dollar ski trip for kids or trips, so.
That's a really big.
Yeah, but that's not even, but I mean, so yeah, there's a pricing issue, but it's so far out of. That's.
Just excited for the concert next week. Yeah, experience. On the concerts, so I'm eager to see how that. Stopping music and chorus classes a bunch of times, so I've seen that. So that should be pretty excellent. And basketball, it's starting up. First scrimmage. Of our season, which is happening right now. Well, the season, the full season starts next week. Are there any questions for the principals or Mr. Shaw? So pass that. Thomas gave this report. Thomas joined the basketball team. He sent us an email this afternoon. He's now in the basketball team, which Thomas and sent a report in, so he's not, not gonna have very much availability. During the basketball season as well, but the games in the books. But he got it to your email box in Fall for twenty-one. There's a school assembly tomorrow. We mentioned the school assembly, it's dangerous to drug alcohol, I think, so. That's good information as well. Mr. Pierce is excited to present that. Sorry? It's middle and high school. It's in the auditorium. Squeeze in this. If you'd like to attend, we can find you a seat. Music community. Oh, right, right, there's. I found out. I'm not supposed to find out what I found out. It's me, this is annoying. Elementary, all right.
Why didn't you move one?
Okay. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, we can move on. All right, great. So in the board business, we were gonna have a student representative search update and we have a student representative potential candidate who didn't meet the criteria. She, that's Brooke. I spoke to Brooke's mother and Brooke yesterday both. She's, she's a gymnast and she's joined the St. J gymnastics team. And they practice gym every day at six to five. And so our prospective candidate found something else to do. That would probably suit her interests, so we may be looking for some other candidates. And I think that we might have to extend the search out again, fresh. Roll with Thomas, roll with Doc, see if Brooke can make some time for us to look for some candidates who are willing to participate. And have availability. And if you can find some ninth graders, if you can find some, some ninth graders, I mean, tenth graders or some eighth graders, ninth graders, then we consider making some changes to the policy. We have some individuals that are interested in bringing you work. But we just need somebody to tuck in the boxes. So we have to fill up the school.
Yes, that's what I was gonna ask you about is about changing the policy.
So I've got, I mean, I've got potential action on the policy for tonight. I don't know if we need to necessarily change it because there's no candidate for which to change it. I mean, I think that you, we, maybe I, you think that would help change the parameters of your search? I do. You know, I, you know, I didn't put the search out to other grades. Brooke heard about it and he came to me. There's some, there are some ninth and tenth graders that I would invite. That I can think of to, possibly to, 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 you know, reply, express interest, but I haven't yet. Okay. Does that have any interest to anybody here? Any of the board members? I think if we expand it a little bit, we might be able to find a candidate.
I think, yeah, you should. Look for. Ninth and tenth as well, but I think we should change. I think we should. Discuss changing the policy. At the next meeting, we could have a policy attached to the agenda.
Code C forty is at the very back. I fell off because there's, there's thirty-four pages on this. It's, that's your, that's your top right place. The code C forty is here for our possible action. And in it, it specifically says that it's, it's open only to. Then incoming juniors continue, so and. Was that the intent in this year? In the spring, in the spring year, tenth and eleventh grader, and you would have a constant flow of children who really wanted to enroll meetings. And it seems as though the way that bears out is. These meetings are pretty boring and children like to have fun, so.
What if they, if they expand the search and they find somebody and then we have the discussion on the policy?
So they would be expanding the search in. Direct conflict, not in accordance with the policy. So that's why the suggestion comes. And so. We're just all at the time now, Mike. That's all we're really doing. So I think that if we, that if we change this policy, then we will be, then we'll be able to just change the wording here of who that it's open to. And we, I mean, it might say that we'd like to have a junior or senior at all times. When we open the search to. Incoming freshmen. Incoming freshmen? Or just freshmen and sophomores? If we're looking in, if we're looking in the spring or we're looking now, are we asking eighth graders? So perhaps, perhaps you could word it as something like any high school student. And if we're, if the term begins at the August meeting. Then a rising ninth grader would be by that point in year, a high school student would be. Eligible to apply, knowing that they don't start until they actually come out as a student on this. And then it allows the flexibility and leaves it open to all. If that makes sense. Yeah, I gotta find, yeah, I gotta find, I gotta find the wording on this to, to make any changes.
Selection and term.
Yeah, I got super defeated yesterday when Brooke, when Brooke shot us down. Oh, man, random, yeah. Was that part of the policy? Right, yeah. So it says a student representative should only serve a two-year term on the board beginning as a junior, remaining on the board until the end of their season. It's also a selection from those of the sophomores.
It's also up under eligibility that they must be numbered between years.
So that would be two places that we have to. Eligibility. It does say, and the next sentence does say they must have attended the high school for a minimum of one full. School year in good standing. Could that just be Danville's school? For a lot of, for their, so that a ninth grader could be, if we have a good ninth grader who wants it. So take the word high school, for the new work, we're gonna strike high. And then, and then we're gonna say must be members of. Daniel High School, so I'm gonna strike of junior or senior classes. Yeah, that is a high school, so that's what I'm on the strike of, the junior or senior classes, strike that, strike the word high.
And then.
Yeah.
And then under selection and turn in their trucks. And very first one and then the very last one.
So if we took it out of the first line entirely and just stopped at board. Just serve to, normally serve a two-year term on the board here. That would make sense, I think.
The striker.
Just like the rest of the beginning as a junior.
Well, but then are you saying that it would be a two-year, normally be a two-year term that's starting like freshman?
Yeah, we have to start, right. If somebody starts as a freshman, are we, are we graduating now with board chair at a two years or are they sticking on for four years? And, and giving the word normally allows if there's only a continuing eleven grader. Who wants a third year, that's the only person in your, your entitled to, yes. To that, by your policy.
It would be very nice to have somebody in ninth, ninth or tenth. And then like the twelfth, that way you're, you're always grooming. To have somebody on there.
We can just have basically a mentor in place.
Right.
So we strike that and then.
And then, and that, and. At the end of number three and selection and turn.
Just strike everything after board.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but I think all of these considerations would come into, you know, should be on multiple candidates, would come into the selection discussion, but don't necessarily need to be, so.
Yeah.
From the policy.
So we, we just knew, you know, rising ninth grader and. We rise in juniors, you, you might choose. You choose based on a conversation. Okay, so if we make these changes, then we change the parameters to open it up that you can ask so much. You're not, you're working for policy. So I've got a strike. Strikes, and strikes, we're striking some words and it's gonna make eligible ninth and tenth graders for this as well. Who've been attended Daniel's school for a minimum of one year in our understanding. And to go forward with that, I'd need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a moment to make these changes to code C forty. Melissa got a second up there. All right, so any questions? Somebody from the public have anything to say about this? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of making these changes, please say aye.
Aye.
What she cares. All right. Great.
My study for shutting down and driving over, so we probably.
Yeah. Probably wide open.
See the door unlocked.
There's a bunch of firefighters out there now.
Yeah.
Not a good night parking. Firefighters yet.
I have a date specific on the budget that we can start with if you want to, and then that doesn't require.
You wanna open, you wanna open the bidding on the budget and see what we get? Yeah, we're on the, this is the next item on the agenda. I don't know if you wanna wait for Mike, if you wanted to go ahead and start asking questions. Okay, I have a preference here. Molly wants to ask questions. Well, we can move down, we can move down to start talking about meetings, availability for meetings, if you want to. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go, Melissa, we're gonna start looking at some meetings. Our next meeting date normal would be obviously in January, but. We're probably gonna have to meet again about this budget, that's my guess, and then we have the, the board committee that will have to meet as well here pretty soon. And one date that was taken off the table, thirteen. So we'll have to sort of squeeze some time in for both of those, and I don't know how soon you wanna meet on the committee. And I don't know how soon we wanna meet again on. This, but I mentioned the budget wants to go pretty quick, so.
Well, tonight, so let me give you some feedback on that. We got one of the three factors.
I see it.
That's come in. And we're not sure when we're gonna get the other two, so we'll get the other two, and before we call another meeting. This board is scheduled to meet on the third.
Yeah.
January. Because we're back to the second, so vacation day, we're scheduled to meet on the third. If things are lining up, and most things like major changes to the budget, that could be soon enough, but. If we get to, I guess what I, I said at the speech last night, if we get the other factors in. And we're comfortable with what we're hearing from this, from the agency, about equal part of people, and if we have to see how I rate for the town. Then I'll let you know when you can try the spirit works.
Okay, but if, if we don't meet again to talk about the budget until the third. You think that's gonna be okay? Okay, that's, because that's, that's an administrative, but of course you gotta call more than anything else, and we gotta, we talked about that. And I think there's really has some change to talk about, but in the meantime, so let's not worry about scheduling that one. Who has an available date for the committee that they wanna start talking about, and then we told people in that room that we'd be, um.
Are we trying to meet before our break?
I don't think we need to, but I don't know the answer, I don't, I, it seems like it seems like we have a lot, we have a lot of meetings to get to, and I think that we might. I don't know that we're letting anybody down if we start these meetings back in January.
What do you think, Eric?
Eric Rob, Eric Rob and Alice, you can all answer this one.
Yeah, um. I think, uh, waiting to January is probably where you get the best attendance, I think December is, is pretty impactful, I mean, I know I'm, uh, I'm out of town for, for a bunch of December as well, so, um, yeah, I did know that, I mean, we've really only had bites from, from five, uh, committee members that are looking to rejoin, so.
I'm gonna put my hat in my hands, see if we can get some more of those original waiting back in.
And I know there are some others just on that note that I would like to get on, that have mentioned it. Yeah.
Um, so, so, yeah, so we are, um, I know that, uh, forty percent of, of the five, Eric, Rob and I are, are, are busy on Tuesdays, so.
Yeah.
Uh, if we can, if we can do something.
I think we need to be cognizant of that, we need to get as much community participation as we can, so this is gonna be a tough one.
You wanna ask Katie White for opinion?
Play, I have plans on Wednesday, so I could never be in person, even if I could only join.
So, I mean, can we start? I got, who has a lot of things going on Thursdays in general?
I'm, I'm out Monday and Thursday. Know that that's a thing.
Sunday mornings or Tuesday. So Mondays, Mondays, so you're gonna be out, important meetings almost always stacked on Mondays. But.
Yeah, I guess.
Tuesdays are out.
Only one Tuesday's out, only, but Rob, we have two Tuesdays out over there from two vital members, so I think those two Tuesdays are out. So let's all take a stab at finding a day in January that we can, that we can schedule one.
We can ask Katie, Katie.
Please.
Katie, you can go ahead and tell, if you wanna speak up about any preferences you have.
Any night is fine.
Hey, what she said, any night, okay, Bruce says he's willing to, willing to come back on the building committee, and he says mid-January as well, thank you, Bruce.
Could be, I mean, we could do Wednesday.
Yeah, that can work.
Okay, so let's look at Wednesday.
I can make it, maybe you can come some.
Yeah, it just depends on.
Most, most points. Well, it's a good Wednesday, eleven, since that's the first, that's the first Wednesday, it's not the first Wednesday, that's the second Wednesday, Wednesday, the eleven, and. Not anymore.
The doors are locked as well as basketball game.
Middle school basketball game that night.
I'll go. Yeah, cuz it's not locked. Okay, so, wait.
You have my calendar. They're probably the closer lobby doors.
Well.
Oh, no, I need to, yeah.
So Dave, to answer your question, we're a non-advisory group, we're a committee of the board, so now only board member attendance matters. And so many three board members to have a meeting, and we're hoping to get three board members and nine thousand very, very, um, idea oriented, solution oriented committee members. Yeah.
Got it.
So.
Participate.
Sure, we'd love to have your input, you've been, you're the guy that's been the most on the road. So.
Have it on the road.
So, yeah, so if we look at January the twenty-third, January twenty twenty-three, the eleventh, six o'clock. I hear. Probably, if, if, I would think that we're probably gonna be back in the auditorium if we can get the participation that we're after, we plan for the auditorium, that's just, put it aside the way.
Yeah.
Did you see Larry?
See Larry, he's the only one, come on in.
Okay.
Um, there's a middle school basketball game, but it's, but it's away. Um, and hold on, there's a first, the.
I mean, it's just.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if it's here, I don't know that that. Yeah, first issue. It's like, I think both the games are ways.
So my, I'm gonna plan that one on Wednesday, the eleventh at six o'clock. That's the board committee. One eleven, so we're gonna leave our other meeting schedule with just our regular meeting for now, and we need action, I'll jump around and find out who's available and when to start questions. Okay, that's all cleared up, Mike's here, we're gonna give Mike a couple minutes to get set. Face down, man.
I don't see here.
But again, while Mike is settling in, just a quick question. Can you hear me, okay? Did it sound, I sort of missed some of the conversation, but it sounded like the majority of board members would be available on the eleven. That's, uh, middle school basketball night, so my preference would not to be at a meeting, but.
That's my, yeah, so if you have a, if you have a middle school basketball game, we need three here, and so you can be the one that's not.
Thank you.
And then I, there'll be somebody else who's got something, that'll be fine, the three, the three of us are here, we can start talking. That'll be cool. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I am ready to listen to Michael talk about the budget.
Okay. So trying to get this out to you guys as soon as possible. By doing so, not all the information here uh, is updated, I guess, the best way to explain it, this very first page. Why, actually, the very first one, yeah. On Friday afternoon, the yield rates were released. One of the three important variables that we need to make an understanding of what the tax rate looks like. Right, that if you guys remember, equalized pupils. It's base education property yield rate, and obviously, uh, the CLA. But we don't have a CLA yet, hopefully in the next week or two we'll get that, we don't have equalized pupils yet. Hopefully, soon we'll get that. But the property yield rate definitely went up in our favor. So what does that mean? It means that it'll have a positive impact on the tax rate, depending on how the other variables shake out. What is important here, what I can show you, working closely with administration, right, Sarah and Larry and Mark and the collective people that head up, you know, all the other elements. We, we have a budget we'd like to throw in front of you, based on what we see the needs to be at fiscal twenty-four. Alright. Um, what you can see here is that budgeted expenditures are up a significant amount of money, obviously from last year, about a million dollars. We can do ninety-seven percent of that walk of what's driving the million dollar increase. Okay? Um, yeah, we just skip the revenue page, cuz it's, it's just, okay. Yep, um, actually, let's go right to the summary, and then if people wanna go to this level, we can, there's a summary page that does that walk of what are the, here we are, beautiful. Alright, okay, so let's just start with compensation and benefits are up for, um, it should be, sorry, it should say four, not five, it's four FTEs. And those FTEs were previously, three of them were grant funded in the last year or two, with ESRS, right? Um, and this, another position, this fourth position is a new position of fiscal twenty-four. So just those alone is, is hitting this two seventy-seven of that million dollar increase. So let that sink in, you can see the FTE by title and position. What they are, what they do, as well as the new position, uh, that's being requested at fiscal twenty-four. Let that sink in first, that's the first part of the increase. The second part of the increase is about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Uh, and that's an increase, I should say one seventy-seven X, right, I don't know why it doesn't, I'll fix that. That increase is related to the CBA, the actual, um, negotiation for the new grid for the teachers.
And supports them.
And supports that, yeah, yeah. The next part is healthcare. Healthcare premiums are up twelve point seven percent, this affects everybody in the state, which is school budgets. Now we have a sped assessment up um, from last year, that's what that two thirty represents. Uh, another thirty thousand relates to L and A, that's a, that's a new assessment of this year. To help share the, the resources, uh, make sure we have coverage. Um, and then obviously this last part, I kinda grouped it as all other, and we can go through those light items, but, but you know, of that hundred and sixty-five, it's, you know, plant operations is up fifty. Principal's office is up fifty, and behavioral intervention is, uh, one, sorry, um, position. That, that area is up as well. So that's, that's your walk for from last year to this year. Now, let me just continue before we get into the, but I wanted to show everybody this very important bottom piece. You know, right now, if, if the CLA stayed flat, you don't have this in front of you, I'm just gonna talk to it. If it does, stays around a hundred, which I heard in a previous meeting, a lot of people don't believe that to be true, because property values are up, it's a good thing, right? But it's kind of like, like an unrealized gain for everybody, but in the event that that doesn't affect Dando. The CLA remain constant, and equalized pupils were to remain constant, right now, this budget would show as zero increase year over year, it'd be flat. Tax rate, property tax rate for the highest bracket that we talked about at that last meeting, the new build, number of, the, um, percentage of the population. Yes, yep, right, yep, so that would only, it would show flats of those groupings, right, to that demographic of people. Okay. Let's say equalized pupil is, is constant, but the CLA drops, that would be bad, right, that would cause a negative impact on the tax rate. What I'm showing you on the screen are options to look at, how do we address that impact? Okay, we have a half, over a half million of those unrestricted surplus that came from the audit, right, the audit is in, it's in basically pre-draft form. Those results were spot on to what I thought they would be, that's good, that means that the, the team and I did well, we recorded all the transactions correctly, the audit is great, that's what the surplus looks like. There's also, remember, if you, uh, up above, there was a, an increase year over year for special education, that was two thirty-ish.
Yeah.
Well, this, believe it or not, there's a special education reserve that's been on the books for at least since I've been here. So it's about four or five years at least, I can think of.
That was, that was passed at a group at town meeting, I believe. Said it, town meeting in two thousand nineteen, because I remember being in the gym, and there was discussion about setting aside some rainy day mon, money to cover the increases or unanticipated increases of special education. Was that under wonder and wind, wonder and wisdom?
No.
No, not mission and vision, this was a specifically set aside.
Um.
At the same time as mission and vision.
It was directed at the same time.
Whole talk about whether or not Australian balance.
Yeah, so, I could just finish an explanation about that. I think the original amount has just been sitting there drawing interest, and I remembered it to be starting at a hundred fifty thousand. Is that possible that it's increased by thirty thousand in over three years?
No, and it doesn't, it doesn't accumulate any interest, believe it or not.
Oh, it doesn't?
It sits in a general checking account, that's just cash on hand.
Okay. So anyway, that was a set aside to cover, you know, unanticipated or made restrictions in special education. And it's designated for that, and it could, and that's the only thing that it can be used for, but it could be used to pay down some portion of the increase in special education costs by transferring money from that reserve fund to a revenue line. And that would bring down the total education spending by whatever amount you transfer, but that would help.
This is only the excess.
The, the.
Over what the state reimburses us for.
Right, that's exactly right, so the amount that, that's up, that two thirty that you saw, year over year.
Yeah.
Is, is absolutely the net amount that's not reimbursed by the state, that is basically the fill left over.
What's that threshold again? What's the threshold for the special ed again, that the, the state?
Well, that's, that's for extraordinary costs.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so the models, okay, that is one part of the equation, the other part is something called a block grant. And the block grant uses, um, so the first part of the reimbursement model from the state, uh, looks at historical two, two year or three year, three year averages of costs. We get appointed a grant based on what it costs us historically. Then, and so, so that reimbursement model changed from what, that's act one seventy-three, yeah. Prior to act one seventy-three, we got on average fifty-six and a half cents on, of every non-reimbursed dollar, that's how the model worked. Then there was a separate calculation for what you're referring to as a threshold, when certain students have high needs and their costs exceed sixty-five thousand. Once you get up over sixty-five thousand, I believe it was like ninety-five cents on the dollar. So that's how that worked, but that's changed, so act one seventy-three says, okay, you're not gonna get a blanket fifty-six cents on the dollar. Now, we're gonna look at historical averages, you're gonna get a block rate, we divvy up that block rate at the SU level, based on the number of special education children. One of the drivers, just so you know, one of the drivers of why we're up two thirty, actually is because there were ten fewer kids than last year, that, than the model we modeled twenty-three, because there's fewer kids, that means you guys are getting less of the block rate, that's a good portion of two there, okay. The extraordinary model, because of the way act one seventy-three changed, the way special education costs are reimbursed. Believe it or not, the state has tried to make us whole by giving more money on those extraordinary kids. You don't have to wait till they get to sixty-five thousand in order to get ninety-five cents of the dollar, no, I don't understand the model exactly, but this is what I know. What I do know is that we get reimbursed more when they are extraordinary. It is over sixty-five thousand is a threshold, but we get more of the money, not just ninety-five cents of the dollar between whatever's over sixty-five thousand and whatever the actual number is. It's complicated.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna even try to begin to explain it, because the twenty-four model's not even released yet, I had to use the twenty-three model to calculate what I think.
Is our estimate of what comes out of our, and what's not reimbursed, just a general estimate of that number?
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Exactly.
No, 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 we can go to that, no, no, that, that's the difference from last year, if you go to the detail page, we can go right to function twelve hundred. And if. So go up, sorry, yep, keep going, I'm looking for function code twelve hundred, that's two 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 zero. You know, that's the guidance and all that. There we go, alright, so this is, right, this was the budget last year, in twen, sorry, in twenty-two. That's what actuals came in at. We budgeted a million forty-four under the act one seventy-three, that was the first year of this new model. That's what the budget is, using act one seventy-three again, we're saying we're up, oh, I'm rounding, two twenty-nine. But the point is, um, that number is a, one of the components of striving is, because we have fewer special education kids, and as a result, we get less block rate money.
So that includes the bus, that includes the fare.
Bus gets reimbursed, or we get money for the bus?
Like that increase, when you, you, I said the new vans in there, especially with the trans in there, new vans in there, that's not all, that's not all.
I'm basically wondering, what do we get from the state, and then what do we don't get from the state, in terms of what we're, what's, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I can look at it. Special education cost in total, what's reimbursed.
Yeah.
We gotta go to the.
So, you know, after years and years of explaining to boards how the reimbursement model works, you need to raise all that out of your mind, because it doesn't work that way. It's not based on a, so the, the fifty-six and a half cents has been replaced by a block grant allocation that's based from year to year based on a rolling three-year average. Uh, we take that block of money, it was total child count, we could have put behind each, and we invited up a portion of the months and digits based on their own total. But when your child count goes down, you're actually getting less of that block. As a concept.
Yeah, yeah.
So Dando's special education cost, I think, in twenty-four, I modeled around two million.
Okay, outside of reimbursement.
That's gross.
What is it?
So the delta, the delta would be what you're seeing up here, not reimbursed, that's your bill.
Okay. That doesn't, you don't get any money for.
So that's the point, you don't get the money.
We don't get any, no brand.
But we have a liquidated the SU level, we can't have any additional expenses or revenues, we have to net to zero.
Right.
That is the net sum game of that, of that amount, but, but total sped costs for Dando, I can look up the exact number, but I think it's around two, that includes everything. But, but total state costs for Dando, I can look up the exact number, but I think it's around two, that includes everything.
Yeah.
Transportation costs, tuition costs, all kinds of interventionist costs, right?
In this, in this case, the special ed parent to ask for in the budget.
Um, right? That, I don't think that was a. It's not your regular parent.
Yeah. The one that used to be grant funded, it's a regular parent.
Yeah, correct.
So you don't reflect in this budget at all, like, what's the total, basically what's netted out by a grant? That's not anywhere out here, is what you're saying, is that correct?
Right.
If it nets out at zero, with what the state pays.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, because in theory, all those, like, the ARP esers and title and all that, that's, I don't even reflect at those costs here, because they're reimbursed all of the time. This is all local, so what you're looking at is the local budget, so local.
Transportation and only, there's other grants, same thing with transportation, other grants that we get.
Yup, so remember, remember, at the SU meeting, we went over all the different assessments, right? And in those assessments, special education, food service, transportation as an example. Are all the net number that we get, because the state heavily subsidizes. Mark's office, my team's office, curriculum development, information technology, none of those are subsidized by the state. Those all have to be, in, in essence, uh, dig it up based on the new calculation we've agreed to, which is that fifty percent FTE for teachers and fifty percent student count. Now that gets equitably distributed based on. The volume of what we're serving, and transactions, and in people, and in students. So, the point is, those assessments, I break them into two pieces. State subsidized, and those are very site-specific, make no mistake about it. And then all the non-site specific, which is what the new calculation covers, but those types of expenses.
That helps explain a lot of my questions, I had, just trying to understand the revenue side and the.
Yup, we, we can go to the revenue page if you wanna see, okay. How do Dando, because Dando's revenues are very, actually unique compared to any other district that I, that I serve, okay? Because you guys get tuition revenue, on the incoming tuition, and that's unlike anywhere, unlike Calcola, Peachum, Cabot, or Twinkie.
Let me think of a question, how many, um, tuition students did you budget for next year, versus how many are there this year?
Yup.
I think it's on the top page.
It might, it might be on there. Um, go to the revenue slot, I was, one, one page only. Yeah, you can't see the notes, I have notes off to the right, so she, I didn't.
Yeah, we did, we did receive the projected tuition income, revenue by seventy-one point.
So, so three things, just about three, let's say.
About, about all three, yup, I can do it exact. Alright, I did forty kids, so last year was forty, hold on, this year's forty, at eighteen seven fifty per child. And last year was forty-five, sorry, it's forty-five kids, but at a lower, at a lower per, per. I tried to create a tuition reimbursement model that's equating to what it costs to educate each child. Unlike others, let's see, we'll talk about that, the, um, the point is, if you, if it costs to educate a child eighteen seven fifty or eighteen five hundred. That's what we're charging, other kids that wanna come in, we're not overcharging anymore, we're not charging any less, just trying to make it whole.
We have the same for middle school, we get six.
Middle school and high school is all priced the same?
They all get eighteen.
Correct, but then if you had elementary, I think there is a discount, I, I don't, the, I don't know the exact number, but it's less. Because the theory costs less.
It's like sixteen.
Something like that, that makes sense, yup.
So it's about four fewer students.
Good.
Yeah, budget is still.
We had thirty-one, thirty-one total. Is that right, thirty-one tuition in the high school this year compared to forty-five?
We're running behind, we are running behind.
But I think we can end with that a few more.
We're also having a conversation with, um, Indemise in January, because they're looking for a place to put some students. Who are kind of floating in the room, but, um, might be candidates for, uh, to be. We get them in for. Basically half a year, about. No, Dave knows.
I do know, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're meeting with a, uh, oh, lady in the spot, actually. She found out about this program and said, then I send you kids, and I said, but, yeah, it's all we take them. You know, courage are, you know, enrollment policy, but.
That's a question I had too, and if we, David said in another, another meeting that gave up thirty-five students. Per class in the high school is ideal, so right now we have a hundred and twenty-seven. And our max is really a hundred and forty in the high school, and we're out recruiting for all these kids, I just, where. This ties into the building plan too, is where we're gonna put them. And same thing with an additional staff member, I mean.
Thirty-five or four?
David said around thirty-five was ideal for a grade, and once you get over that, it starts to feel like too much in a classroom.
Right now, we're what, thirteen hundred, so.
Yeah, thirty-five, so between thirty-five and forty.
Yeah.
So we, we could check out another candidate for students and not. You know, not part of the.
But that was also part of having this other program, that, that number also pre- precedes having an actual.
Right.
Technical and special learning program.
And I, and I think a piece of having the numbers down or having to close some of the classes because of COVID two years in a row, so kids that would have come couldn't.
It's still, it still creeps up though, when we have the class that's. And start getting. According into the class.
Right. I think, yeah, that component, to me, ties into our long-term sustainability plan, where, you know, Dave's position is that's our funded currently, and that's. Done in two thousand twenty-five, and so, I, I worry about, I saw the other staff person in there too, and I've done, you know, program. Development too, and you need to have staff to grow the program, and I think, are we investing in this and going all in? I don't wanna do it halfway and, you know, like. And be in a position in a year and having the same conversation about how are we gonna fund this position, or are we gonna keep this going? So I think just really looking at, and then the conversations that have come up around the, um, the building and some of the community saying that. Do we wanna invest in a high school, so I, I feel like our path forward isn't clear, and I, I believe in it, and I think it's. But David's done an amazing job with the limited resources he's had, I just think it's a bigger conversation for the board to have about. Where we're going and what we wanna invest in, and what the community wants to invest in.
If I, if I can take you back on that, can you give me some sort of an idea? What your plan is with the two middle school interventionists, middle school high school interventionists that we're moving over, are those gonna sundown at some point? Are we gonna. For some.
Because we're still doing recovery from the pandemic, this is about the year, we get, we just got those positions.
I, I, I understand, I, and, and, you know, then when we go to town, I, we're gonna have to tell them that we're up to twenty-one thousand dollars per student. And what twenty thousand dollars for students, because we're still actively doing rescue. But at what point are we planning to not be actively doing rescue, because after next year, Dave's program's also not funded. Now we're up over the, we're gonna be up over the excess spending threshold, which is coming back.
Probably so.
It's not, ever?
Well, right now it's grand, right now it's grandfather sunset until twenty-nine.
Okay.
There's some runway, you know, there's some runway from the agency that, wow, they might reduce it that, but. Remember, in FY twenty-five, we're gonna be in the new, uh, allocation model around, um. I can't think of this term last night either, the, um. The, the funding study, huh? The waiting study, that comes into place FY twenty-five, and the, and the projections on that show the positive benefit to. Every one of the districts in CCFU resulting from the change.
Or we were on net, I believe, we were just flat, I think that's what I.
I, I heard from a, a guy who's really good at spreadsheets, we may, we might get ten extra points.
Oh, for the waiting though, the waiting.
Waiting, no, I, no, every, every one of the districts. Based on, based on the financial data, the find that that was followed. Drawing more money.
I think there was a recent PPR, I've got a recent, uh, spreadsheet where there were some calculations done that handled with the net. We were, we were basically breaking down, wouldn't have changed on that, but we can always.
Oh, we're, there's, there's gonna be some moving pieces next, when we're sitting here this time next year, we're gonna have a whole nother, you know, different complexion of things. The board may have committed to fund a CTA pilot program for two years, with the idea that they're going to. Develop a program that will practice starting in seventh grade. Um, and, and keep them active, uh, active and engaged in high school. In, in ninth and tenth grade, and so that they are academically in good standing to go to the technical program. So. You, you speak to this.
Dave committed to a program that would pay for itself.
You're not, you're, especially if I'm entertaining, I'm gonna do it for a, it's a two-year gamble, if I send it, it doesn't work, goodbye. That's right, that is what we agree to.
Right, and, and.
And it would be good to have a program that's sustainable, good to have a program that, that can keep going. The challenge right now is a mix of positions. We're not doing that, I'm, you know, after this meeting, I'm gonna go spend another at least hour probably food during the century, because we lost tomorrow. The reality is, we're, you know, filling two positions, there's no room to grow the program, so every program developed size. Yeah, so hopefully, if we can tell that. Not every, each of the days, we're always trying to do this. Grow that. Really takes them to that much of the line. And when, we can move on, you took us through a respect piece?
We can, I mean, right now, I don't know, makes, I mean, we can go through the, um, revenue piece.
Okay, can you, I, I can ask you a question if you'd like, do you have something active that you can show us how the yield affects? With that, because you say that one number takes us down close to level funding. Do you, do you have a spreadsheet, do you have?
I think it's a simple decision.
Yeah, I mean, if you, it's all it is, we could just.
Just design the total.
Yup.
Solution by the yield and then.
I thank you, I haven't, I just wanted to circle back, so special education, by the way, because annual twenty-four is actually two point five million. So what's reflected on the budget is about a buck, fifty percent more, just over two million, I thought it was around two, it's two point five.
You want to send that to me real quick?
Wasn't known, comments for now, but there's.
I answered those three.
Okay, so Mike, to say that differently, we pay fifty percent of our special education costs, essentially, what you're saying.
Well, if, for fiscal twenty-four, that's what it looks like, yup.
Yeah, just wanna say something quickly about the yield, that thirteen three one four that you're talking about was actually applied for July of twenty twenty-two. And this year's rate, if you look at the estimated rate that we had here, it was like one forty-six or something like that. And our actual rate is one thirty-eight because of our CLA this year, the CLA that is actually known, we're just having gotten it yet.
Yeah.
Um, so when you do that calculation, that's using this year's numbers for next year, so it's actually quite subject to change, so that property yield. Will change for next year before our actual tax bill comes out, just, just as a.
Yup.
So, so you know what you're actually looking at, that property yield's not actually next year's property yield, that will, won't be set until all the budgets in the state are actually set.
But what I'm reflecting up there, just, which is voter approved. I'm not playing the game of all this timing issues, it's whatever was voter approved, what did we put in front of the voters? That's what was it approved, and that's what I'm comparing the twenty-four budgets to, it's too difficult to play this. Well, if you had waited three more months to make the vote, you'd know this rate was gonna be blank.
Well, they can't set the rate until we vote, so.
I understood, but, but the, the reality is, things could change even after the vote happens, happens every year. Could be equalized pupil, could be the yield rate, and it could be the CLA. All those three things can change well after we put something in front of the voter, just so everybody's clear, that's why I don't play that game, I just put comparison to what was voted on previously. It's too difficult.
I believe some, uh, districts moved their, their meeting till May, is that right?
No, not a lot.
Like the votes?
Not, not, not around here, not, not in CCFU.
There is one.
Now, CCFU used to phone in May, they, the year, year prior, they moved their date up to April, we've already made.
They both are budgeting in April, they both. Not much, yeah.
Not, not much, they used to do it in May, now they're doing it in. Uh, the other four districts voted on common leader.
Right.
Alright, I'm going to.
Eric, you said the, uh, CLA is actually up?
Yeah, and it, it was pretty high this year, because we had a reassessment in this town, so when they read calculated CLAs. Um, when you have a full reassessment, it's just grand list divided by last year's grand list. Next year's CLA will actually be quite a bit smaller because of just in, uh, inflation of market adjustment, um, as opposed to a full.
Do you happen to know what, what the CLA is gonna be for, for the budget year that we're in, because last year was one hundred point nine one, what is it?
I, I don't, I, you can do the math, our pupils was three one five dot fifty.
Yup.
And the property yield, those thirteen three one four, so the CLA is whatever. Closing that gap, because there was one thirty-eight six, I think, is our actual property rate this year.
Yeah.
One thirty-eight two, one thirty-six.
We haven't, it hasn't come to us yet, so I don't, you know.
I, I sent the email out last week asking all the, empowering them, to imploring them to, to send it to me, and then I don't have it.
No, they'll have it by, in July, when tax bills go up.
No, no, they should have it any, any moment, it's something to give it to, any minute.
That's to give it to us, so that we can get a, uh, tax of that.
You mean, you mean the new one, not?
I'm talking about the CLA, the common level of appraisal, that's coming out any day, if it's not out already. And all clerks know that I am hot for it.
So, I was just trying to be clear, Eric, you think the town clerk has the CLA for last year's, or last year's, yeah, for last year's, yeah.
Last year, I'm talking about for twenty-four, that's what I'm asking.
It's not, it's not, it's not, but the ten ninety-one that you have here is not what actual FY twenty-four.
Voter approved.
Voter approved, when we voted on the budget.
When we, when we had information, that was information given to us, but we can give you, that's all, that's all. Absolutely, yup, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
In this proposed FY twenty-four, you don't wanna put in the fifteen four seventy-nine that came out on December the first, to show us that back.
That, that came out Friday.
Yeah.
I sent this out, I don't know.
No, I believe, but I'm saying, here you are with the spreadsheet, here I am with eyes.
Yeah, I know, because I didn't, I, I didn't wanna reprint everything and reset everything.
It's right there, I said.
Okay, you won, so it's up on the screen, it's, it's up there. But it's not complete, yeah.
Why don't we let Mike show what he's got, because this is a, this is a living document, and he's continuing to revise it as it gets better, let's talk about that instead of. So this, what I'm showing here, where, where are you showing?
You can start right there, it's perfect, so, I assume equalized pupils about flat. I'm reflecting the new yield rate of the fifteen four seventy-nine, haven't changed anything else, if you can scroll down just a little bit. I assume the CLA about the same, just flat, to see what would happen, but even with the million dollar increase. Year over year, based on all the things that we discussed, it's showing flat, essentially flat from last year. From the voter approved side, okay, that's all that's reflecting. When this comes final, and when the, uh, equalized two becomes final, we'll be actually able to show. What exactly we, what the impact will be based on the variables that we have. The previous slide that Mark had shown is we have options, so if there's an increase. We only got a reserve of about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand special education to absorb the charge that we're hitting this year, that we had no control over, right? And then we have a half a million dollars of unrestricted surplus that we could literally use to ask for less education spending money that we need to educate our children. So, we have options, and that's all I'm trying to explain, is that depending upon how this stuff falls out, we can decide to use some, all, all, or none.
We have capital reserves for building maintenance and.
Yup, it was, it was on that same page, it's about twenty-seven thousand.
So where's that on the budget, I did not do that.
Right, so, it wouldn't be on the budget, but it's one of the pages, it's in the attachment, it's in this attachment right here.
I think something that, you know, a budget can be a community engagement tool too, so I think it'd be clear to show the community that. The board's thinking about that, and that it is making responsible choices with.
Well, that was the intent of that slide, is to show that community engagement for the reserves you're asking.
Yeah, meaning where, where's the line item that says for the cap? Yeah, meaning where, where's the line item that says for the capital reserve, I can find that.
It's because of the balance sheet, I think it's just that it doesn't.
But do you, is it possible to put that in the budget as a line item to show that we are putting money?
We can put this exact page in the budget, which will explain why we're up a million dollars and what our reserves look like.
So I think, Molly, what you're asking is, can we put, so there's like, I think it's sixty thousand dollars for facilities. So you're saying can we set more aside, yes, that's.
I think that's a bigger question, I mean, that's probably gonna come up, is how much money to be set aside.
Let me make the suggestion that pursuit votes investment. We know where we're sitting, we know where we're sitting right now based on the numbers. We know that the, uh, that the yield rate is sort of benefit the tax rate. To the point of basically erasing that budget increase, okay? You have to decide if, if the other two numbers come in and have, uh. Have a negative impact on the tax rate, you'll have an opportunity to do two things. You can decide if you wanna apply. All or part of the special education reserve fund to buy down the cost of special, special education, it would get transferred. You have the authority to transfer that to a revenue line in the budget, and that will bring down, uh, the expense because it's more revenue. You also have an opportunity, and you always have this opportunity, take money from the unrestricted. Uh, surplus and transfer it to the capital reserve fund and lock that money up. Okay, that's not a function of the budget that we're trying to, that we're talking about for FY twenty-four. This is like the, you know, this is like Dorothy and Wizard of Oz, put your heels together three times, and you can do that anytime. Okay, so it, if, if that's something that the board wants to do. You can do that. I would suggest that you not do that until we are comfortable with, with the budget that you're gonna put forward.
Well, and a, and a lot of it is the unrestricted reserve, the unrestricted surplus, we use a lot of it for capital type. Three sixty-four last year alone, but on the surplus, what's great about it is that we can choose to send it, spend it on the building, or we can choose to spend it on other things. The way it's labeled now, correct? Once you lock it into the building.
I wouldn't move, I wouldn't recommend moving all of it into the capital.
You don't wanna lock it.
But you can move a chunk of it to, to, you know, show good face or whatever, that we're saving up money for capital expenditures.
Yep.
So that sixty thousand that was in there last year, that's been used, obviously, this point, like that's not rolling into this unrestricted surplus here.
You're saying what's built.
I guess it's hard to tell with the budget, what's rolling in, what, where, you know, where things are going and.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm lost on the sixty thousand dollar.
Yeah, so did you say that there?
Well, that's how much, because you're talking about what's budgeted, so there's like sixty, it's about. And that's what I.
Let's go through the function code twenty-six hundred. Yeah, let's, let's, let's go. Twenty-six hundred is operations and maintenance, we'll go through each line. Yep, yeah, twenty-six hundred.
We're gonna bring it up.
Right here.
So their ground maintenance. Plant and operations is in there somewhere, I guess.
So it's function code twenty-six hundred.
Okay, so I, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know that that's all, this, okay, so that means like all of the ground, all of the. Do you have more detailed information, Mike, to see what the object functions are, so you don't have to.
Alright, here it is. Just gotta blow it up a little bit. Oh, we are, we're gonna, we have to, there's no choice.
I, I just, I'm just wanting.
Yeah, there it is.
For this budget in particular.
There it is. Gotcha, I gotcha, there it is, in all the details. Twenty-six hundred, right there. That's the beginning, so going by line, and if we can blow it up more if we need to.
You do.
The first thirty line you're comping then. First thirty lines are all competition benefits to the people that work in that. Salaries and benefits, yep. Is all the full-time people that are in the plant operation.
If you can't see that at home, raise your hand up there, attendees.
We don't need all the function codes, I think.
Okay, Mike knows where he is.
And then, so my facilities are in here too.
It's all of this, so if we, if we can get beyond the comp and bend, which I don't know how much sense it's gonna make to a lot of folks. We can get right down here to the nitty-gritty. Water, sewage, rubbish removals, floor removal, groundskeeping, repairs and maintenance, 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 lease, insurance, telephone. Supplies.
And then heat, heat is.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Alright, that's in the operations.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanna, you got it, that's right.
And then what does property services mean in that four hundred code?
Yeah, so, so now we gotta scroll to the left. If you don't mind, just scroll over, so your count codes. So your four hundred series that you're seeing on your summary.
Yeah.
It's all of these, that's your full hundred series, property services, so that's the.
Those are rolled up together into.
You can't, that's a label. These are AOE, these are AOE recommended. You can change whatever you want to, I'm gonna, I don't care, you're good, you're telling it. We, we can call it groundskeeping if we want. Alright, and then your five hundred series is what, other purchase services, I guess, six hundred series and supplies. All your electricity, your propane, your fuel oil and ship, that's all on the supply.
Yeah.
There's your heat.
Yeah. Alright.
That's the detail.
Good. And capital reserves just rolls into this surplus.
So, so let's be clear, so this is a operating budget. So it's all expensable items. We're talking about capital outlet. Those usually mean an improvement. An item that we're gonna put on the balance sheet and not expend. That means we're gonna run it through your, everything I just showed you here.
Yeah.
These are all expendable items.
Yeah.
That flows through the current operating budget. Capital outlet would be like putting on a new roof. And we're gonna use a capital fund to do that.
Yeah. And speaking of balance sheets, do you pull reports every month? Like a profit and loss or showing expenditures and revenue? We don't have to review it and talk about it, but can we get those? Probably have those just to see where.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Alright.
I think we just found someone that's right, Molly can take it over. I can tell she likes it, that's good, that's really good.
Can you give me a sense, like, is there a percentage that wages are up by overall, like? If I say wages are up, blank percent overall.
Sure, let's, let's go to, um, the summary under direct construction, eleven hundred, go to the compensation benefit. It's actually, it's, it's in front of.
So first step, other steps, though, overall. What is the percentage that those are up overall?
Right. Does this anticipate any staff? Well, actually, let's do this one. You wanna know comp and then not just direct, direct for everything.
Like, like, if, if I say, if I say, by like, sure, it's just have to write a letter that's in the town report first. So let's just say somebody has to write a letter, they wanna come in for, and he needs information put in that.
Yep.
What percentage of wages up?
Sure, we, we can do that, yep, but that other page, I think it's very powerful, which is walking through why we're up a million.
Yeah. That, that's right, twelve and a half percent on, on, on the, and then you have to persist for, for groupings.
So that, it's all listed here, but if you wanna just comp and then. Which doesn't include just the new FTEs, right, additional FTEs, or the, or the additional healthcare increase, we can do that, so you gotta go to. Innovation Budget Download. I'm gonna use the filter function, so you wanna scroll over to your right slowly. Alright, keep going. You're gonna go to object code, so click on that filter button. I want you to deselect all. Who wants to know just salaries, just put any number that begins with a one hundred. Keep going, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four. Right there, now. I can, we can't hit apply, what version do you have, sir? I clicked the auto apply, I clicked the auto apply. Yeah, now hit apply filter, I don't know what was going on next.
I'll start installing my computer.
Alright, tell you what, how about I just read it to you, how about that, cause I know my version allows me to do it, I don't know why mine's, Excel version is not allowed. Alright, tell you what, it's Clayton, if you wanna know just, just comp and then, which is a mixture of items that are not part of this. Right, part of what I showed from our increase, the total. Budget year-over-year increase. Is four twelve, just compensations up four twelve, of which we know. A good portion of that's the four new FTEs and a hundred and seventy-eight driven by, um, the CBA and the CEEA. From the.
It's up forty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's your total. No, he asked for just salaries.
Yeah.
That's right.
Health insurance is out of our hands, so I can't, when you're explaining that, you just, you said that is, that is now out of our hands.
Yeah, but it's nice to know what that impact is in the budget, and that's what I was trying to show.
So in the ongoing negotiation. We, we raise the salaries up four hundred and twelve thousand. That's, but we, but also including four new positions.
Alright, four new positions plus the most recently negotiated salary grids for the teachers and the support staff.
Yeah, alright.
But I'm using, I'm using what we anticipate the final arrangement to be. Based on the version that was sent to me.
Don't ever tell anyone that.
The new LNA that the CCSU approved. How much time are they spending at Danville?
I, I don't, we're not tracking it that way. We agreed with CCSU board that we were going to. Take the cost of those LNA's and use the allocation formula to, to distribute the cost, we're not tracking it like. You know, salaries here, leasing days, it would. Basically, right, based on allocation formula, uh, this is, this is crazy working, but sometimes they're moving the bank and something out.
You see that being, I'm just thinking of things, you have, you know, summer, the summer program isn't in here, I'm assuming because it was SRF funded. Not in this budget, the summer program, thinking about priorities, do you feel like? The nursing program that need there. In comparison to a summer program for elementary students, if we were to talk about those, um. Which one is the greater need in your eyes?
I, I'm not prepared to give up on either one of them, and we are, we're, we are starting to do our work on finding. Another, we have enough money to pay for summer programming and after-school program.
Okay, so that's.
And we will, are wo- working on another grant opportunity to continue with after-school program. We're, we're gonna apply for a twenty-one C grant, this is, that you had in that.
Okay, so that is, the summer program is in here, in the budget somewhere, this app, it's not in the budget. You're looking for funding, extra funding for.
Continue to pay those programs.
Gotcha. Through this year, but I mean more for the budget for next year, you need to find more, more funding.
I think we're gonna run, we're gonna run out of money probably, um, after, uh. I think the thing that's gonna be a question in summer program, we, not, not in the summer of twenty-four. Yeah, summer twenty-four and after-school program, program after that, so. You know, we will continue for other grant opportunities to do that, or. The, the boards collectively will decide to de-emphasize that, where the boards will decide that they're gonna return to a, a, a family-funded model. I, you know, my position is that we should find, if we can, we should find ways to make those programs no cost to the families. But, you know, we're gonna have to find money. So that's, uh, that's a method.
Is there a grant for the LNA, for the LNA's?
We pay for it, we pay for it out of SRF two grants for this current school year. Move, how to move it, that money's spent, we had to move it. All of the SRF two funded, uh, positions, uh, in CCSU and the five districts are moving into the budgets. CCSU already approved the budget for, uh, for their share of those, uh, grant options at this point. That's why you're seeing four additional, four additional positions that were grant funded.
Um, does this sound reflect the eight and a half percent overall growth rate? The Vermont School Board Association. Uh, released, um. A letter that it projects an eight and a half percent overall growth rate in school spending.
That's a projected statewide average, I don't.
We're double that.
We're, we're higher, some of, some of the other districts in CCSU are lower.
We're fifteen, right now, this is a fifteen percent, that's, well, you're reading the statewide average.
Yeah.
We're almost twice the.
Yeah, for, for, for people spending this time.
But, for the reasons that we discussed, all, the walk of that fifteen percent was on that previous page.
But. Save the support, twenty-one thousand. You have no parent state currently, you're, you're mostly by yourself?
Well, the parent position that we funded to assist academics. And that person is, Nick, for half the day. And then going with that being one of the one of the best people for the rest of the day, so. The, the, the program assistant with all this budget and be able to be the second.
Okay, are there any more questions? Alright, so. We're gonna hold on this, we're gonna wait, can we see all the numbers, we're gonna wait to see what happens, and we're gonna look at, uh, January the third, unless. Some stuff comes in earlier, we're gonna talk about it beforehand.
Yes.
With the way the yield works, the numbers don't show that as they looked originally, so.
Yeah.
Alright, we all agree? Melissa, you good? She was having trouble here. She's not, she's not. I just wanna make sure, alright.
At the very beginning of the conversation, you said you had a question.
It all got in there.
Okay, so that moved, that moved that, um, what I want to do next is public input. Public input, alright. Here we go, we did future agenda items, we did next meeting day, future agenda items, the budget again. And that's on one, three, and then we'll set an agenda separately for the one eleven meeting later, uh, with the committee. The one thirteen, or the one thirteen, one eleven meeting, uh, then it's set for the thing to set. And anybody else have any, uh, agenda items, we're getting away that we know about right now past the budget. Student rep, the student rep will stay on, student rep search is what we're on now, so we're in the team that just the student rep search. And I mean, that will be acting yet, I don't think. I'd have some applicants, and then they actually wanna come at the meetings, and let's see if we go stand announcing it tomorrow. Alright, uh, if that's all, and all anybody's got, and we've done that, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, sir.
I just was reading on, is there public input?
I just asked three times.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I didn't actually hear that.
Okay, so we're, I'm past it, so.
So I can't just, so I just sat here for like an hour and a half. I'm sorry, I totally didn't.
I looked right at you, you were looking at your phone. I'm, I'm past it, so, I, if I'm gonna go back now, but. I'm gonna go back, and I said, I'm, I'm a public input, public input, right, so I, that's what I figured you were here to do. I'm gonna go back, public input, out.
Thank you.
Three minutes, alright.
And I don't know if this is just directed, um, if someone could point me in the right direction, if there's already something in place for this. But, um, in the past, when my son, when I've needed to register him for sports, Randy always, um, points me to Family ID. Which I don't want to be a part of, and I would like to be able to see and ensure that I would be able to. Fill in the paperwork that I need, and he could add my email for contact, but I don't want. To be putting data from my family that's often personal into that app, when I know there's protections in place. So from privacy standpoint, there's a real big issue.
Can you bring that to the administration?
That's, that's what I was wanting for direction.
I don't understand, you know, stop work.
Okay, so who would I direct that to? Okay, so who would I direct that to? Okay, so I can.
Yeah, we can talk tomorrow.
And maybe should I just wait to talk to you for wrapping up here, just for anyone, do you have a minute, or should you, should I call you?
Here's a second. There's another, there's a third.